Okay, so we would like to welcome all of you. Thank you for being here tonight. We love the involvement in our community. So first of all, I have the pleasure of swearing in Galen Methman as our new board member.
Can we, can we? Mindha, we need to make a motion.
Oh, wait, I do?
Yeah, we have to have a vote.
You have the resolution and then...
Oh, we gotta vote on you first, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion? We said that before in executive.
I'll say it.
Steph?
Steph?
And Jen.
And Jen, sorry.
That's okay.
All right, let me read this. Resolution to fill the Board of Education vacancy, whereas a vacancy has been caused on the Board of Education by reason of resignation, and whereas this Board of Education has the legal authority to fill a vacancy for the unexpired term thereof. Now therefore, be it resolved by a majority vote of all the remaining members of the Board of Education of the Hicksville Exempt Village School District, that Galen Methman be and hereby is appointed to serve as a member of the Board of Education of this school district for the unexpired term of Jared Wonderley, ending on December 31st, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Mather?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero. Now! Now, yes. I get to give you the oath of office. Okay, Galen, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Hicksville Exempt Village School District, Defiance County, Ohio, to the best of your ability, and in accordance with the laws now in effect and herein after to enacted during your continuance in the set office and until your successor is elected and qualified.
I do. Thank you.
And we have to have you sign. Thank you.
Okay, I feel like we should say, we did start the meeting earlier at six, so we already did the pledge of allegiance and all that stuff.
We did.
It's weird not to do it with all of you.
Yes. So if you were waiting for that, you missed it.
Yes, we did. We welcomed all of you that weren't here yet. We did the pledge and then we went into executive session. That's correct. All right, we have a presentation tonight from Carla Hinkel, Defiance County Economic Development.
I'm not Carla, I'm Jerry Hayes from the Economic Development Office, and we're here tonight to introduce an idea to the board. Carla is our workforce development manager, as you may know, and she's working hard on involvement in the schools, Slattery and the principals, the senior, a lot I know. And tonight, we wanted to come and talk about the idea that's gained some popularity in Northwest Ohio and other places, and that is the reintroduction of industrial arts classes in the schools. You may or may not have heard, Montpelier has done this as a local initiative and has been showing a lot of success with that. So Carla will come up and introduce the idea for you. Thanks.
Should we let her?
Okay, I hand out to each one of you, it is an article that was in the Bryan Times about the Montpelier shop class that they're starting. I also attached to the back of it a few pictures that I had taken when I was over there, just to kind of give you an idea of the layout in that. So the Montpelier schools, it is completely privately funded by the businesses in the area. It is not at all funded through anything through the schools, or through the state, or anything like that. So when they built their new facility, they had the idea to put this extra shop class on. And if you look at the pictures, they have a lot of stuff that they're doing. So this last year was their first year, and when we went there, we just thought it was a really good idea. We've been talking with Defiance City Schools also. They are very much engaged, actually, at the meeting we were at, some of the thoughts I had, or some of the thoughts the superintendent had, so we were kind of all on the same page at doing something, which we feel would be really beneficial to each one. But I also want to let you guys know that I spoke with Mr. Meister, because I wanted him to know that after last month's CIC meeting, we had this on the paper, because we're talking shop class, and the boards really wanted to gear that direction. So I called him and I said, "I just want you to know," because I work a lot with them over at Four County, doing different stuff, and I said, "I just want you to know that we are not in any way trying to take away from you. I am a huge supporter, I will push kids that way." And when I do the tours, the junior high kids that I take out, and the high school kids, you know, different ones, trying to tell them, you know, if you're looking for this, you know, your first stop is going to be the tech school. So what we want to do, and what we're thinking is, it would be great to match up with some of the other kids. The ones that are not going to go to Four County. And the ones that still need to learn some skills. And Mr. Meister was very much on that. He was thankful that I had called him and just, you know, let him know that we're all working on this together. So the biggest thing that we hear from employers is the fact that a lot of their employees, beyond the soft skills, I mean, that's number one, but beyond that, a lot of them, they don't know how to read a tape measure, they don't know basic, you know, calculations, what basic tools are, the different things that they're looking for to go into some of the modern manufacturing. So those are kind of some of the things that we think shop class will bring back. This past summer, I did a summer manufacturing camp for junior high kids, and we kind of did a little bit more on construction, because construction is huge out there, and all of the different trades, the welding, electrical, plumbing, all that, you know, I mean, it's the market out there is in such high demand, that right now, for every five that retire from the skilled trades, they can only replace one person. So did all those people go to tech school? We don't know, but it's, it's a, they might have learned a lot, we hear from shop class. Well, I learned that in shop class. So we're just here to give you the idea, to think about, to look at some of the stuff, kind of a last-minute thing. We are going over to Montpelier at two o'clock tomorrow, so if anybody's available. Some people are going over there at two o'clock tomorrow to look at their shop class. I know that's last minute, but, you know, we just wanted to put that out there and see if there was any interest, because we want you guys to know that if there is interest, we are gonna help. I mean, we will be in this with you, helping get with the employers, getting the things that are needed. Right now, Montpelier's curriculum, they kind of did it on their own. I mean, they worked on it, and it was kind of a, you know, let's see how this works and what we need to tweak next year. So that's kind of where that is all at, and I know that they would be more than willing to share whatever they have. Stryker is doing a little bit also right now. So one other thought is too, I was here, I believe, last week, and met with Nathan, and was able to see all the stuff in your maker space. So it kind of goes hand in hand with what you guys are looking at doing with the maker space, because what we're hearing is, we've got to start with the kids in junior high. I mean, that's not too young to start getting the seeds planted in their head, and helping them decide what they want to do.
So what grades does Montpelier currently?
Currently, they have, freshmen and sophomores can take one year. They can either do it their freshman or sophomore year, and then when they get to their junior and senior year, they can do it both. So they get a little bit more time. So they want each of them to have a basic. It is a two-period class.
I'm curious, what was Tim Meister, what was his comment about this situation or about his ideas?
Okay, so like I said, I mean, I have a really good rapport with them, and I just wanted him to know that after the article about our CIC board meeting, that we are in no way trying to replace them, but we want to catch that mix, that for whatever reason, sports, band, you know, they don't want to leave their home school, whatever the mix is, that they don't want to go that way. We still want to catch them, because we want to get them in the workforce. And, you know, right now, a lot of it is college-bound, college-bound. Well, we all know that college is not for everybody, and we've got to start getting the message out that it's okay. There's all these other avenues that are amazing careers with amazing income, for people that, you know, hands-on. I mean, I could see it at the summer camp with the different kids, you know, that at one spot, they were kind of eh, but the next spot, we would do something, they'd just excel. Like, yeah, you really like that, don't you? You know, so, so it's more so giving them, instead of, you know, you need to go work here, you need to go work here. Well, let's find something that's their interested in, to keep them there, so.
Okay, now you said that Montpelier is privately funded. How, how do they do that?
The employers, businesses have stepped up, private donations.
But the, the school, that portion that was built on was built by the school's funds?
Correct, correct. It has nothing to do with the building. And I'm not their spokesperson, but I just went there and I just saw so much that was so great, and we got to talk with several of the kids that were in the program, and what their thoughts were, and, you know, a few of them were going into the military, a few were going to college, and a few were actually in job placements with some of the local businesses already, so. So I would definitely, you know, encourage you, if anybody's available tomorrow, we're gonna be there at two, but if not, they're open to give tours, I mean, they're open to talk about it and find out more information, because I only have a snippet of it, you know, of what they're doing, but something we're looking to do in Defiance County also.
So Montpelier provided the space. And how about the equipment?
That was all donated.
Awesome.
Donated and privately funded, yes.
And then the, the staff, though, is paid by the?
Correct, the school staff, correct.
Mr. Genshman?
Yeah.
When we visited Montpelier, we were in all of their program also.
Turn on your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not loud enough, I know. When we visited Montpelier, we took a tour of that facility already. In fact, some of us have done it twice now. And I know for a fact that they have a teacher that is assigned to that program for those two periods a day, as the leader, head teacher, but at the same time, they've hired someone who was a construction manager from the private sector, who actually comes in and teaches the course, as like an aide, correct? Okay, it's a little bit different setup. I think, I'll give Montpelier kudos, it's been very creative and a positive thing. And then they've, they realize that, you know, a program's only as good as the person in charge of the program, and I think that with the idea of pulling someone from the community who's a construction person, not a teacher, to lead that piece, I think that's one of the reasons it's been so successful. And financially, I don't know how they, they go about that piece of, of that, but you are correct on everything being donated from the community and the local businesses, which is also a positive.
Right, right, right.
Jeff?
Which is something, if you decided to go in that direction, we would be willing to help with, you know, going out and meeting with employers and all that.
Jeff, do you know, did they talk about funding through like career tech funding, through EMI-S and?
I'm assuming that's how they've, I'm assuming that's how they've done it, assuming. I mean, you have to, because with the, with the career tech funding, for example, our family consumer science courses, we do not have a big enough program to where we, we are under, we fall under Four Counties' umbrella for that. They actually manage that and, and kind of facilitate and assist us with that with Mrs. Leone. And I don't know if they have a large enough program with other, like CTE classes to where they manage it themselves, or if they're under Four Counties' umbrella also. And I don't fully understand that piece, and I apologize.
I don't know all that either.
But I, I know it's, it's a little bit more complicated than just, hey, let's, let's hire this. So we'd have, we'd have, definitely have to investigate something like that, if we would consider that type of programming.
There might be a revenue source there, if it's not been tapped into, or we might be able to tap into.
Jerry, do you have anything else? Ben, would you want to add a few words? With you guys having the apprentice classes here with APT tool, we just have a few things to do that Ben has for how that would work.
I'm the president of the Economic Development Board, so I guess my comments would be that our job as a board is to kind of hear the cry of the businesses in Defiance County, and it's, as Carla mentioned, it's been a definite outcry that, you know, there's been outcry for, for workers, for workforce development, for all those things. The last six months, what we've heard businesses saying is, why isn't there shop class in the school? Our hands are tied. I think as Carla mentioned, what I can do is rally that same business community for money. That's an opportunity, I can go back to them and say, if you want to help, put your money where your mouth is, and let's work together on it. I know, you know, many of you know my family and our, and our business, we've been heavily involved in that as well. I think we've seen, at the APT program, we've seen a lot of really great results. We also know that we're not teachers. We have an opportunity, we have a facility, we have an opportunity for kids to come in and learn from the facility. We've also learned through experience that teachers are teachers for a reason, they're trained to teach, and sometimes that's our shortfall. So the other thing we've, I think we've noticed is, we capture them in sophomore year for their junior, you know, sophomore orientation for their junior and senior year. We don't get them at the seventh grade level. I know, me personally, when I was in school, I was in shop class starting seventh grade, and we were working, building a birdhouse, you know, all those experiences, I think a lot of people had. So I guess personally, I'm passionate about it. I know, as a Hicksville business, we're passionate about it. But really, our, our pitch from Defiance County, and it's not just with Hicksville, we're going to a lot of the area schools, and saying, this is what we're hearing from the business community. It needs to be a partnership, and if there's interest, we want to know how we can help bring it to pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Interesting, we've talked about it. Okay, Director of Operations, Eric.
Busy summer. Let's see, I got a long list of things to talk about. I guess I'll start off with, we've been busy here, the custodial staff cleaning all the classrooms, moving all the furniture out, shampoo and everything, painting a lot of different areas. We've also been working on landscape, we've still got to go back through one more time before school starts, and pull some weeds and everything else, so busy with that. We've put picture frames, all the picture frames in the building, I've had the pictures swapped out for the new ones. We've also have eighty or ninety more, I've been told, that are gonna have staff photos in them. They're here.
Thank you.
I got the holes drilled in the frames, I just wait for the pictures.
Thank you, thank you, Eric.
Yep. They're all ready to go, I just got to wait for the pictures to be able to put them in there, I was gonna hang up eighty or ninety empty picture frames by the classroom. So once they're in there, or we have them, John and I will get those put up right away. Also been working, just this past week, our playground, we have the ported place rubber, and we've had some areas, areas that had some tears and stuff in it, over just wear and tear over ten years of being in the building, and last Friday, John and I went through and cut out a lot of different spots and patched all the new areas with the patch kit, so saved a lot of money, us doing it, instead of having them do it. So also, we have all the fire inspections been done on all the equipment. Still waiting on the fire marshal, I'm probably gonna have to email him, I've kind of been holding off on doing it, because anytime there's a ceiling tile missing, that's a fire violation, and we have a few of them due to the topic I'm gonna be talking about later with some roof leaks. Been working on the bus routes, and those dialed in and changes, and I know Diane Zidey can, called around and got some kindergarten information for the new kids coming in for new stops. Went out and talked to a couple of parents about some different stops, concerns for kindergarten kids walking a distance, you know, in town, and crossing over the road, so we've been working on that. Getting busy right now, all the teachers are starting to come in and have items for us to work on or to move. We also had floor coating. Last year, we had done about, a little bit over half, maybe two-thirds of the building, new floor coating. This year, we had the company come back, was not really happy with how quick they got it done, and there's still some areas that need to come back and touch up, but probably gonna have to wait till Christmas break, or Thanksgiving, or something for them to touch up a couple of other areas. We had them marked with tape, and either people moved stuff, like trash cans on top of them, or moved a desk or something, and they didn't see them. So they're gonna come back to work on that, they got a third of it, they had about a third of the building to do. With that being said, we had some rooms that, like concession room, that had accidentally been flooded a couple times from our grease interceptor being plugged, water softener went to regenerate, and the tile were starting to pop up. Also had it in our kitchen area, laundry room, they'd go to fill up a mop bucket, turn the water on, and walk away and forget about it, and kind of did a lot of damage to the tile where there was getting loose. So we had four rooms that had all-new VCT tile put in it. All we had to do was pay for the labor. We still had a lot of leftover tile that matches all the existing classrooms, so it looks like nothing's ever changed. We, we have it all out in the building. When we moved in the building, contractor thought all the second-floor elementary rooms were supposed to be tiled, so they bought all that tile. And Kevin Miller, after about two or three rooms, noticed it and told him, "Why are you guys putting tile in? It's supposed to be carpet." And they said, "No," and they kept putting tile in, and then they found out they were wrong, and Kevin was right, and they told us to keep all the tile. So we've kept it as replacement for the future, we've been able to use it and make it all match what we currently have, so it makes it nice. Been also been in meetings and working on permits and stuff like that for like stormwater to eighteen with the road and the building. So then working with Fannie Howie, and we've had some meetings talking about the building addition. We've also, over the summer, we've had weapons of mass destruction detectors, or metal detectors, what a lot of people talk, talk, or I guess call them, in our, in our elementary entrance, and then also our main event entrance. So I believe, start of the school year, all students would get dropped off in the bus at seven twenty-five timeframe. They'll all come in, the elementary set of doors, no longer do all four sets of doors on the outside, all four doors do not unlock, only the two by the metal detector. Everyone's forced to come through those doors, and then the four inside doors will be unlocked, where they can go through any of those four that they wish to. You can always get out of all four doors, it's not a fire code violation, it's all been inspected by the state and approved by the state, so it'd just be a little bit of a, I guess, getting used to, coming in just same, same two doors all the time. And if you go down the main event doors, since those are metal detectors actually in the, in the hallway, there's a little wall with a nice Hicksville Schools logo under the two panels of plexiglass, so it's really nice. So it'd just be getting used to that for everyone. Sensory room, that was kind of transformation in that room a little bit. Was unaware of, I guess, how much we were gonna actually do in there, I thought they were just gonna use the existing classroom and kind of find out, it was take out the existing. It wasn't, it was designed as a computer lab, and it would never work as a classroom, or for what they needed, they needed all the space. So we had to remove some countertops and cabinets that were in there for, for their seating, and we ended up, with that being done, we knew ahead of time that I was gonna leave concrete spots for the, for the carpet, so we had new carpet put in there, and it looked really nice, and all the equipment that they, they got grant money, I believe, for. John and I got all that stuff put in, it's all mounted. Only concerns we have of, as of right now, are that that's still in the front of the building, and there's still some roof leaks in there, so we're still, have some trashcans around collecting water. Get that a little bit. The next one, I guess, will be talking about the roof leaks. On June first, we had a hailstorm come through, many are aware of, had inch and a quarter, inch and a half hail, and that caused extensive damage to our rubber roof, our PVC membrane roof, the white rubber. So we have fourteen different levels of roof, like somebody up front, somebody up back, like the main gym's one roof. We have fourteen areas. Thirteen of those fourteen areas all had roof leaks. The main gym did not show any roof leaks, but it also had a second layer of roof material on there from last year. They're not guaranteeing that it won't leak two, three years down the road, so we had a lot of discussion and looked, I got three quotes from multiple different, I guess, from three different companies, and they ranged from replacing it with slip sheet, and they replaced it with the best roof possible, with some isolation board, and then another company had buckets of rubber that would come in there, kind of coated around and spread it around to fill up all the seams and cracks. And when it was all over and done with, the insurance was only going to cover the cheapest quote, which did nothing for our main gym, no warranty, no, no work whatsoever to it. Talked to the other two companies that were quoted, the main gym, so it wasn't really apples to apples. The company that had the second low quote, talked to them, we ended up getting the best roof possible, and twenty-year warranty on all fourteen of the rubber roofs. And that is gonna be at a cost, a little bit to the district, over the, or I think it's a thousand dollar deductible is what we have, but we're gonna pay a little bit more money out, it's around thirty-five thousand dollars, that'll get all of our rubber roofs with the twenty-year warranty. We don't have to pay any of that until they're completely done with the work, insurance is paying the half up front, and then the other portion of it too, so. They have started on the back of the building, mainly because our kitchen area and our auxiliary gym are the two worst areas. Our library, as you can see, is probably the third worst area, then our sensory rooms are fourth. Pretty much every area, all four, thirteen out of fourteen had stained ceiling tiles. But we're getting water, anytime it rained on our auxiliary gym floor, which caused some of the boards to start cupping. We had Service Master's been in here since June thirteenth timeframe, I have all sorts of pictures, they have visqueined everything, they pulled the base trim off, they had twenty fans blown in there, four large dehumidifiers. They've been trying to get it, been meeting with the wood floor company, because that gym floor was scheduled to have the floor refinished July fifteenth, and so we pushed it back to August twelfth. Then it happens, moisture level in one spot's still a little too high. Hoping Thursday or Friday this week, they'll be able to come in, sand it, put the first layer down, wait a day, put the second layer down, give it the four or five days of cure time, and it'll be ready for August twenty-sixth.
Wow.
First day of school, first day of gym class, first, first home junior high volleyball game. The backup plan, if the, that doesn't work out, would be August twenty-sixth, the Barstee Girls are away that Monday, so junior high could have their, their game in the Barstee Gym that, that night, so. So that's the backup plan, I guess. We also met with three different companies, getting prices for changing out all the ceiling tiles. There was a possibility that John and I were gonna do all the ceiling tiles, we knew we could get it done in time, weekends whenever to get it done. We were able to find a company that was doing it fairly cheap, it's not, not, insurance was paying for all of it, and it wasn't really cost-effective for John and I to come in and spend that much time to do it, if they're gonna do it for that price. So they're gonna come in, they're scheduled August nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first. They're hoping to have all the ceiling tiles replaced by the twenty-first. And also on the roof, they moved over to the front of the building today, so our bus loop's been blocked off, they had the crane in today, sent off all the equipment. The front of the building should be leak-proof, hopefully, weather permitting, by Friday. They are going to be making a lot of noise, I emailed the administration downstairs, they found out that the first floor roof is concrete decking, not metal decking, so they gotta put TACON screws in to hold all their new insulation board down, so there's gonna be a lot of hammer drilling and make a lot of noise up front Monday and Tuesday next week. So they already apologized, I just found that out today, and I apologize to all of them for next week. So, but hopefully by the, they had to order all-new metal edging and caps and everything else too, so they're in the process of getting that material in, there's like three, four-week lead time, but it should be leak-free, hopefully, by Friday, front of the building, back of the building, and then they're gonna still be on site working on it, so. So they've been working on that, the gym floor, hopefully, and then the next one would be the solar field. So I know, I think the last board meeting I was not at, and you guys had discussed and read in the newspaper some concerns about the solar field, and whether or not we should still pursue it. I met with Mark Palmer, he was the gentleman that was here before and had met with you guys. He apologizes for all the delays, he wanted to be here tonight, but he's actually at another board meeting that he already had promised somebody that they would be at. We met with Steph and Mindha, and talked with them last Wednesday, kind of went over some of the reasons behind it. This started, I mean, I started looking at solar and wind back in 2011. We finally come up with a company, and it was actually worthwhile in 2017. We had a board meeting on December eleventh, is when we talked about it, kind of got the verbal okay. In 2018, they start working up with the PPA Power Purchase Agreement Plan, our pricing was fixed at eight cents a kilowatt for twenty-five years. We met with our lawyer, Ryan La, I think it's Ryan Laflame, I believe, met with him, they wanted to look over the contract and do some wording. That was getting finalized April 2018. March eighth, 2018, Trump installed the twenty-five percent steel tariffs. And so all the pricing that was kind of agreed upon, and what they thought they were gonna be able to make with the price per kilowatt, kind of got shot down for them, so the, their profit that they were hoping to get, that twenty-five percent tariff, most of the stuff, all those solar panels and stuff come from China, and so they were worried about making money, so they kind of lost a couple investors, maybe not investors, but a couple people towards the very beginning, they didn't see it as being profitable, so they kind of backed away from it. Then they kind of got into surveying the property, making sure there wasn't any oil rights, or, you know, anything like that. They had to check, make sure there wasn't any spills, do some soil samples, they checked for trees and elevations, and you name it, they've, they've done all the research on it. Start kind of getting a little bit more involved, and get closer towards the end of 2018, beginning of 2019. They also found out they were putting a levy on there, that hasn't stopped them or slowed them down at all, but the one thing that did change is, once the levy passed, was that they think that we should add an eleven percent larger field, because the new building's gonna consume quite a bit more. They also talked about, one big concern, they've been waiting on AEP for a lot of They also talked about one big concern, they've been waiting on AEP for a lot of this. A lot of it's all their check offs. They get one thing checked off, then get something else denied, they gotta go back to drawing board. Part of their problem is we were allowed to somehow in two thousand and eight slip through and our main transformer that feeds the whole building is a Y delta transformer, which means it has three wires go into it. Three wires from the pole out to the transformer. Those weren't even allowed, shouldn't have been allowed back then. Supposed to be a YY configuration, which is four wires. AEP will not allow them to install it with a three-wire system. So somebody has to pay for the transformer. They're willing to pay for the transformer, but with the new building addition, their concern was the building construction, during the construction, the architects are gonna spec out and need a larger transformer to feed the other building on top of it. So they don't wanna buy a transformer at seventy thousand dollars and put it in and find out that it needs to be a larger one. And they, they were kind of hoping if, if it's the same size as what we currently have, they have no problem. They'll pay the seventy thousand dollars and, and take care of it. But if it's something where it's supposed to be larger and no matter what, with the building construction, they were kind of hoping the school and the school board would be, stick behind that and pay for that cost of a new transformer. One other concern on it is that the cost, or the lead time on a transformer, whether you get a rewound one with a longer warranty than the new one, is like twelve to nineteen weeks. All depends what size transformer you need. So they can get one that's refurbished with a longer warranty, more readily available, they can get a brand new one for. But I never really hounded them or really, you know, really said, hey, you know, where are we at? Because there's no money coming out of our pocket. We never had to pay them one dime to do any of this. They pay for all the installation, they do all the site work, they put all the fencing in, all the stonework in. They do it all, we pay nothing. And then when they have it all up and running and it's functioning properly, or functioning, every kilowatt that it produces that we use, we pay for it at eight cents a kilowatt. Over the course of twenty-five years, our savings, I like to be on the low end and just in case we do save more money. You're looking at twenty-five years, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. And that's a two percent increase for AEP. And typically AEP over the course of the last fifteen years has been closer to four to five percent. So at five percent increase, you're looking at more over a million dollars we'd be saving. You know, close to a million dollars, we'd save over twenty-five years. Also, we're locked in with a third party, Mirrorfield Energy on our electrical rates per generation, four point eight three four cents. And that their rate would get, go up as soon as that solar field's put in place, cause we already signed a contract and they're basing that on our current consumption. So if all of a sudden we start using all the solar, we're not taking it from the grid and they're not, we're not paying that fee, they're gonna up our rates. And that contract is up in June twenty twenty. Already sounded, signed another contract for starting in June twenty twenty. At the end of the other one for a lower rate. And already got an email that no matter what we do with the solar field, put one in or don't put one in, whatever we use, that rate will never change. So it's lower than what we're currently paying for the generation portion. So, so I'm trying to think if there's anything else I missed. I know you ladies took a lot of notes and I'm just kind of familiar with it that day when we were sitting with them. The ones, the one other thing is a lot of ours, a lot of the other schools, they were at the same price as us, eight cents a kilowatt. But theirs is a fixed system, which takes a lot, a lot more room. Ours was gonna be the, the tracking system, it's gonna start in the east, sunrise is, sets, it's gonna track with the sun. You, you use a less footprint, I guess, for the area and it's more opt, I guess. It's the best system that's out on the market, actually. So. Any questions about the solar? Oh yeah, the placement, um, the placement, we wanted it, and it's right in the print, we're supposed to be located the farthest southwest corner that's possible. Without being, you know, you have to be thirty foot off the property line or wherever it may be. They had it shift a little bit farther to the north than what we were hoping. But they said it was, they thought those are Johnny Apple seeds in the corner of the, the property. And they also wanted to get it away from the trees because of sun. You know, they block the sun, they block solar production. So they wanted to optimize the location. So we're in the process of looking at getting that prop, or those trees maybe taken down, whether it's at our cost or the solar company's cost. We hadn't really talked about that. Found out that the lady that owns the property, Keith knows the name, I didn't, I never knew the name. But I looked it all up and I contacted ODOT Garage. They said they took down every tree that was theirs. They said it's the property owner behind them. Found out Dan Michaels farms it, but he doesn't own it. The person that owns it lives in Massachusetts. So I'm in between trying to get things okayed on whether or not we can take them down or not take them down. So, so if that's the case, it'd be nice to shift it farther southwest if you guys are still on board with solar field, so.
So who, who's responsible for the maintenance of the solar field?
The first seven years, it's, it's all for them. They're, they're, they should come out and wash it at least one time a year, dust everything else. As long as we stay under that agreement, we don't buy it, they're responsible for all the maintenance and upkeep on it. If we decide that year seven, that we wanna buy it, the reason why it's year seven is they get a lot of tax incentives from the government. We're tax exempt, so we can't get that money. So that's kind of how they offset their cost. At the end of seven years, there's no tax incentives by the government, so then they, then they'll sell it. The rate is not set by them, it's not set by us, you actually have a third party come out here and that's independent company and they say this is what the system's worth. And if we wanna buy it, then we can buy it, then we're not paying the eight cents a kilowatt. But you, you know, you might have to spend, who knows, half a million, I, I don't know what it would be, three hundred thousand, three quarters of a million. I'm not sure what that cost would be at that time. And then anytime after seven years, eight years, ten years, you can, you can buy it out if you like to. But up until, for twenty-five years, if you stay on their agreement, they, they have to maintain the whole thing.
Any idea how much our total claim's gonna be for the hail damage from the floor to the roof to the tile?
The, the tile was, uh, cost of the tile was twenty-five hundred dollars. I, I never, so somebody has a calculator here. So twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars for the ceiling tiles, fifty-three hundred dollars for the labor, for the guy to come in and change them all, for his crew to come in and change them. I haven't seen a bill, but I know after two weeks of Service Master's between seven and ten thousand dollars. And they've been here for four weeks, so let's just say twenty thousand dollars. Our school car was a little bit over two thousand dollars for the, the Malibu, the densest of Malibu. I still haven't got a quote. I've contacted James Miller and Chris Yoder. They haven't been on site yet that I know of. And I've reached out to them a few times about getting a, a price for our land lab. I don't know if Sandy Brown knows it yet or not, but the Plexiglas on half of her building for the, kind of the greenhouse area, that all has dents in it or holes in it and it leaks when it rains. So she's probably not out there when it's raining to notice that, but that's gonna get fixed. It's all part of the thing. Our walk-in refrigerator, that's twelve hundred and fifty dollars to replace a, a controller. Water's run down the face of it, running inside the controller's full of water. It, it vaulted out. They have to comb the fins on the condenser fans for the walk-in fridge and freezer. That was part of that twelve hundred dollars too. The roof itself was three hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars, I believe. So. Minus eighteen thousand from that.
So we're getting close to half a mil.
Yeah. Pretty good for a thousand dollar deductible.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty good. One of the questions I had on the solar field.
Yes.
Are we automatically gonna go with the eleven percent bigger? Even though we haven't decided the size of the building yet? That, that's a, my concern is we go eleven percent bigger and let's say our complex isn't as big as what you guesstimate or wherever it may fall. And during the summer, when we're selling it back as a loss, that could be huge depending on how that plays out.
The eleven percent with right now, we, we use around one point six five, one point seven meg per year. And the field will, currently with eleven percent would be like one point one, one point two meg, tops. The eleven percent, it's not, that's not set in stone. That was, AEP will only allow you to do a certain percentage too. Certain sized solar field, but that's, nothing's been set in stone, eleven percent. I know they said for them to buy equipment and stuff, and that's part of the reasoning was if they put a larger system in, they get a little bit more price break too. So it kind of makes it more economical for them.
Like you said, I'm just concerned about when we start selling back and.
Yeah, you don't wanna be a net, you don't wanna be a net producer, you don't wanna overproduce, for sure. You don't wanna, you, rule of thumb, seventy percent of what you, you use is typically, how much do you wanna produce? There's other, I know some schools nearby that are using ninety-seven percent of what, I'm not saying they're using it, but they're producing ninety-seven percent of what they actually use per year.
Any, any idea how things are going in Antwerp with their?
No, I was gonna talk to Harold and I hadn't had a chance to talk to him yet. I know they had concerns of, they use one point three three meg and they're putting like one point two seven or one point three meg system in. And there was concerns that they were gonna have to shut down the system temporarily, you know, periodically to make sure they weren't in net export. Because then you become your own generation company, like your own AEP if you overproduce. So I know I talked with Jason Slattery, he's a graduate from here and he works for a company called Jim up in Toledo area. And they've done a lot of projects. They haven't done any schools, they've done a lot of municipalities. And he looked over some of our stuff and he, he kept saying, make sure you don't overproduce, make sure you don't overproduce. And I just kind of showed him that they, they couldn't compete, they were like nine and a half cents per kilowatt. And so I kind of bounced some stuff around him to get his input. And he, he looked at the, he looked at him and the one that we ended up going with, that we signed with, with energy optimizers was the best size and everything else.
So I think that's all I have.
Been a busy summer.
Eric, you did an amazing job. You and Sean do an amazing job.
I could say if I, if you asked me a month ago if where we're gonna be at for the first day of school, I'd have said, the building's still gonna leak. Sensory room's not gonna be, maybe not be done yet. Wood floor in the gyms might not be up and going, you might have class outside for a while. And Sean's already said, you know, it's nice out, I, I can go outside. And so we kind of got lucky with contractors being able to move some of their schedules around and stuff too, so.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd ask Keith if it's okay, but I got a baby at home, so.
Yes, you do. Congratulations. Okay, principal reports, Jeff.
All right, if you don't mind, I'm gonna stand. I don't think I've sat for that long ever in my life, so. Pass the bench real quick here. Mr. Eisen and Jay Trimali, we met back in June. I know we've been having this ongoing discussion about some sort of recognition or athletic hall of fame here in Hicksville. We've been having this conversation for roughly a year now. We feel like we've reached a point where we're going to develop a small committee and then start to continue discussion on that progress. So definitely some good discussion, got a lot of really good ideas. On the same train of athletics here, Jack Shock and the Athletic Boosters. First off, I mean, everybody knows Jack Shock in the community, amazing man. He's been around Hicksville for forever, okay? He has almost single-handedly been running the Athletic Boosters for the last probably seven to ten years. And there's a, again, a small group of us that are going to be meeting to discuss a, a transition period and develop a new committee on application process for our coaches, for reaching out to the Athletic Boosters, for funds. And of course some more oversight. And then we're gonna be looking to enhance the Athletic Boosters by doing an application process. And those of you that are from Hicksville, I mean, when I was in school, Taylor probably when you were in school, you know, the Athletic Boosters, there was definitely a lot more people involved in it. We had a committee, they did a lot of great things. Jack has done an amazing job doing this pretty much by himself. I don't want to forget about Nancy either, his wife, she's been the treasurer, so. But it's time to transition and we're looking for, again, start with a small group and then build upon that. A few future events pertaining to, I mean, kind of today, but also the first day of school, which is August twenty-sixth. Final forms, notifications, you know, we've been communicating through social media, I've been sending letters home. I know we do our digital mailing that we do through emails to parents. Again, remind parents, get that completed prior to the first day of school. It's a great help for all, I mean, all our forms, I mean, athletic forms and again, our coaches. I've been to a few coaching meetings, cause I have children that play sports. And the coaches are telling the parents, final performance is the greatest thing in the world. Because year one, it was difficult because it was new. Year two, this is the best year they've ever had in getting, you know, whether it's physical forms in, emergency contact forms, emergency medical form, everything is in for all our athletes. So all our coaches are like, wow, this is great. We're hoping to have that same turnout from our parents when they, when it goes into enrolling or re-enrolling or updating information for our district. So, and again, remember if you don't have that turned in by August twenty-sixth, those awesome phone calls, the five talks, our text messages. We know how knowing all those are. High school class schedule changes. Contact the office. Our goal this year, we want all schedule changes for our students to be completed by the first day of school. Because again, and I'm gonna get into this a little bit later. When, when we establish our courses and the number of sections of courses that are being offered, you know, it's important that we have accurate numbers. And unfortunately in the past, what I've noticed is we offer these course, or schedule change opportunities in the summer. It was our guidance counselor, but a lot of students will wait till the first week of school. And I'm just gonna be honest, what they do is they come in, they realize their friends are in their classes and now they wanna switch classes, they wanna change classes. And then our numbers get all messed up and, and there are times where we go from a class of twelve or fourteen students to a class down to eight. And that's, that's unfair to the teacher. It's unfair to all the materials that we're ordering. I know some are consumables, you know, and those are things that we can avoid ordering if we can. So we'll be sending out an additional instant alert about schedule changes. There's an information sent out to the parents about schedule changes, meet them in the summer. Because I guarantee I'm gonna have some awesome conversations with some upset parents and students come the first week of school and I'd all change their schedules. So anyway, again, you've been warned. Final score awards for the spring twenty nineteen and of course assessments, those will be out in about September. And that's the, like, we talked about school grade card report and our indicators that we're going to meet for the state of Ohio for spring twenty nineteen. And that of course will be again available to public in September. Individual student score reports are being sent out today and tomorrow, so families will be receiving. For example, if your student was a freshman this year, chances are they potentially took the algebra one or geometry test and they also took the ELA one test. You'll be getting those individual reports and typically we don't get too many phone calls about that, but they are coming your way. Speaking of, and of course assessments, I'm gonna tie this into graduation requirements. Again, for the all twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three, for the seventh consecutive year, graduation requirements are going to change. So the class of twenty twenty-three, so that the incoming freshmen, their requirements are going to change. When I say changing, number one, they're actually reducing the number of tests that are gonna be required. They're getting rid of all the social studies tests. So the sophomore history test and the, the government test for juniors or seniors, that's going to be dropped for the total points that they have to have in order to graduate. We've been discussing this for the last few years because typically what Virginia does, Ohio follows. Virginia dropped those tests last year. Imagine that, Ohio dropping this year. So we will be looking at not only, you know, a change. And that really won't affect us till next year because the freshmen don't take those tests. So technically this year will be the same old situation as last year. When the current freshmen are sophomores next year, we will provide one fewer test. And then when they become juniors, they will not take the government test, will be down to five tests instead of seven. That's gonna save us man hours in preparation. That's gonna save us logistical nightmare issues for an additional about a hundred fifty kids. And we also test all our IEP kids, one-to-one and all our five oh four kids, small group and anyone that is recommended by our teaching staff, one-to-one, small group. So again, you know, we may end up reading potentially three hundred fewer tests starting next year and then we're pretty excited about that. I will say this, I would expect additional changes next year. They're actually considering dropping the geometry test. We do not have data to ensure to the public, but I will tell you this. I know what Hicksville's score was for geometry and I don't think there's a school that I'm aware of in the four county area that was within twenty points of us. And a lot of them are thirty or forty points lower than us when it comes to the passing rate. The state requires an eighty percent passing rate. We didn't even meet that. Yeah, I think on average, we're about thirty or forty points higher than most schools in the area. So I think the state's gaining points of realizing, well, maybe geometry's just, you know, instead of fixing it or preparing for fixing the test and what they're doing, they're just gonna drop it. So again, be prepared for additional changes on that piece. Moving into what they were discussing about kind of the industrial technology programs and APT. Number one, I can't, you know, say enough about APT and, and, you know, what they've done and provided our students. I'm not going to say it's been perfect on our end and I know that it's been a learning process on their end too. I know in the beginning I mentioned that academia gets in the way sometimes of making a program that available to some of our students that really need this program. So we appreciate your partnership and everything you guys have done. And to give you an example of how academia kind of gets in the way, kind of, you know, the situations we're dealing with. You know, we talk about students that are going to college, talk about, you know, this push for college. You know, one thing I think that we've done a really nice job at Hicksville over the last ten years is, is we realize that everybody's going to college. And we realize that's not for everyone. So I wanna, I wanna make sure everybody realizes that we're not sitting in here counting on our chest saying everybody needs to go to school. We actually push the skill trades big time here at Hicksville. We promote four county career center and of course we promote the APT. And I know Ben and his dad, Tony, will tell you that, you know, from our end, I think we, we push it and we provide as much opportunity as possible for every single sophomore and any junior that did not take advantage of this sophomore to be a part of that, that program. So we offered another program this year through Northwest State Community College, it's a partnership program. It was going to be an industrial technology satellite campus through Northwest State. We were really excited. We had twelve or fourteen families, kids signed up for classes. It was awesome. Problem is, again, we start talking about programs at this level. You have to have highly qualified teachers recognized by the state of Ohio to teach these type of programs. We don't have that. We don't have the, you know, we talk about the funding and things like that, or the facilities and the equipment to do that. Northwest State stepped in, they offered, actually sent two professors this way, four days a week to provide an opportunity. We sent our kids out through this. Problem is because of EMIS and everything we have to report and how these courses have to be, they, I mean, it's just amazing. EMIS, EMIS requires every student to receive a highly qualified education from a qualified staff member in order for us to receive the funding to pay the teacher or provide the money for these courses, okay? For us to get this program started, we had to do it with Northwest State. We worked all that out. Now it's on, and again, I'm not trying to call people, but now it becomes students and families, you're taking college courses for us to be able to offer this. And this is where we're struggling, okay? It is, we had, we had twelve or fourteen kids sign up for this program. Unfortunately, Northwest State and myself, through the months of June and July, were contacting parents, calling parents, emailing kids, emailing paperwork, mailing paperwork home. And I think twelve of the fourteen never responded or said anything or did their part. So Northwest State called me Friday and said that they will no longer be able to, you know, offer this opportunity because they need funding to pay professors to come do that. So I apologize to all the board of this, but I just found that out a couple days ago. And unfortunately, we're gonna have to reschedule those students into our, our current course offerings here at Hicksville. And, and the unfortunate part to tie to what they were, they were discussing is we have a lot of kids that would benefit from that type of programming. And again, it's never a simple fix, okay? Whether it's a funding, whether it's, you know, it's, it's having the, the space or the equipment for the property to teach that, you know. It, it's an unfortunate situation. And again, I know I've, Carla Hinkle and I know Diane's been in here and I've spoken to her many times and then out of school and of course Ben. You know, we want to support, you know, those opportunities for our kids and we just gotta figure out a way to do it. And also not get in our own way because unfortunately, I hate to say it, but we do get in our way sometimes. And those of you that are aware of the APT program, the only way we can get our kids out of this school over to APT was to go through Northwest State and, and, and establish Northwest State with the engineers and Ben and Tony. And, and, and establish, Northwest State with the engineers and the, and Ben and Tony developed a brand new curriculum to meet the requirements of Northwest State. And OBE to establish that, and this is the Hicksville, we're pulling to get those kids to submit stuff. You know, so it's, it's never simple, but you know, it, it's, it's one thing when you're dealing with it here, not have to worry about the kids going on their own to a Northwest State unit. So I apologize if I share that information. But now, positive news. In the back here, we have Mr. David Moore and his wife. Mr. David Moore, he was actually, he's been presented to the board for hiring the position of a special education, intervention special position here at Hicksville. I'll tell you what, and I have to say this, okay, and remember when I say these things, his head needs to fit through the doorway before he leaves, okay? We interviewed six candidates last week. He was, he was outstanding. In fact, the entire committee that was involved in the hiring process, they, they were all just really impressed by him in that classroom, to the point where, you know, I'm not going to lie to you, it's like there's no way anybody would have loved him. At that point, you know, I, I've been speaking to Mr. Moore, Josh Parks, who's been a, a big part of this process of getting him hired. You know, we've spoken to all the right people, and all the people that, you know, that we have mutual partnerships with, and I hear great things about him. I've been lucky enough over the last, I want to say, five days to be at the Tin Cabs game, to be in Portland, Indiana, and to be sitting in my office while you guys were interviewing candidates for this position, and say his name. And people hear me say his name, and they knew who he was, and they keep telling me that he is an awesome human being, our school is so lucky to have him, and, and, and they are disappointed that they're losing him over in Portland, Indiana school. So again, make sure your head fits through that doorway. But we're excited to have him as part of our team here at Hicksville, so, welcome.
Welcome. We're glad to have you. Thank you. All right, Andy.
Jeff took about every one of the points that I had to say, but it's all right. I'll be real quick and real brief then. So August 26th is our first day back to school, and August around here is, is chaos, not just for Eric and them, but us dotting D's, crossing I's, getting schedules ready, making sure that, you know, this teacher moved, or this, this position switched, and a lot of changes that, that go on the last minute, that we try to make sure that day one, we're ready to go and, and smooth sailing. So August 26th, we will be ready, and we're excited to have the kids back in the building on a regular basis, and that's, they're the reason that we're here, so we're excited to have them back. We had seventh grade orientation an hour ago, from six to seven, kind of getting those seventh graders back in the building and refreshing them and reminding them about all the rights and the responsibilities that come with being a seventh grade student here, computers and athletics and all that other stuff. So it's good to see some kids back in the building. We're starting to see kids with athletics back in the building. Ball sports are underway, practices. Just wish good luck to all of our ball sports athletes this year, competing and representing our school. Final forms, like Mr. Slattery said, get those turned in. We're getting a lot of phone calls from parents who have forgotten the password, that's the biggest phone call I get about three or four dozen times a day. Give us a call, we can send out a reminder to you to, to reset your password. So if people are having issues with that, give us a call, we'll send it out to you and we can help assist you in, in getting that final form set up. And like Mr. Slattery said, if we could have that done the first day of school, that's just a big step for all of us, and knowing who to contact, and emergency contacts, and all that stuff being done would be, would be huge. The other thing, and I know Mrs. Coffin's going to, going to speak on this as well, this year, one of the things we're looking to do is enforce, kind of a rule that's really on our, in our student handbook already, but it's visitors at lunches. And, and having visitors at lunches has become an issue, a safety concern, to be quite honest here, that, that we've had, and it's become a bigger and bigger concern. Last year, for example, we actually had three straight Fridays where we had police and our safety team that we had to call in the building for relatively minor issues, I'd say. They all deal with, with domestic issues within parents, to be honest with you, and which parent is allowed to see the kid, and when they're allowed to see them, we can't keep track of it. And, and it changes all the time. I probably get one or two across my desk a week, and, and those custody situations change, and trying to decide which parent is allowed to be seeing that kid when, we can't do it. So we are going to still invite parents, when we have grandparents day, when we have math club days, and we're prepared for it, and we're able to, to accommodate those parents. We love to have them in, but we're going to have closed lunches with parents on, on a typical everyday basis, so it's something that parents should be aware of. Any questions?
How's that communication going to go out?
Newsletter here.
I have it going home with the students on the very first day. I already have it written up and printed out. I also have asked the teachers to include it in their letter home. Their welcome letter to the parents if they had not already written it. I had asked that about a week and a half ago, so I think a lot of them will have it included in there as well.
I think you'll probably get some calls on that.
We will.
They'll be pushed back. Which is sad, but I don't blame you.
But it is really only for safety.
It's a safety thing, and like I said, there was three straight Fridays that, and, and you know, like I said, it's, it's, it's not just for the, the safety of the kids, the children who are then put in the middle of that situation when the police then rip their parent, and the principal rips their parent away, that kid's done for the day. Because if the cops and Mr. Hunter or Mr. Slattery, whoever has to get involved, that's a tough situation for those kids, and it's becoming more and more common, and it's becoming a more and more difficult thing for us to manage here. And like I said, it's actually a rule, it's actually in our handbooks already, and we just haven't really pushed it, and I think it's time to.
And other schools have implemented it. I mean, at defiance, I never have had, they, they'll do a donuts with dad and muffins with mom one morning. So it's, it's going to be a big change for here, but other schools have been doing it for years, so. I, and, and that's the way that I'm going to choose to tell parents, it's, it's for the safety of your children, it's because we love your children, and we, we don't want anything to happen to them. And so they'll still be invited, like, I mean, when, when the kiddos make principals math club, and then we are going to have a grandparents day in May for third grade students. So they'll, they'll, and, and I'm hoping that that third grade grandparents day will be an every year occurrence, so, you know, they'll have something to look forward to that they'll have somebody here. Maybe we can, you know, add another grade level once the music teacher gets here, but just limit it.
Honestly, from my perspective, I don't have to deal with that as the high school side, but as a parent, you know, I mean, being in the building, it amazes me that, like, some of these parents come in with birthday cakes and almost have a birthday party in our cafeteria, and I just think that's wrong, because then they invite these seven kids and exclude these kids. Or I saw a situation where, you know, we have tryouts for, for like these, these little mini bitty ball programs, and not all the kids make some of these teams. And then all of a sudden, they want to do a pizza party for their team, and there's three kids sitting there that were cut from that team, now they've got to watch all these kids celebrate. And, and, you know, in, in the end, it's like, you know, why are you doing this here? We're not trying to be bad guys, it's, you know, it's, safety's the number one thing, but also the consideration to all our kids. You know, I mean, and, and, I don't know.
Those are all very legitimate points, I just think, you know, when people call, those are the ones we need to share. I think that's, you know, kids being excluded because, you know, there's only five seats at that table, and now they're by themselves, and it causes more harm than good.
My understanding, too, and I've, I've actually, I've dealt with not allowing people in the cafeteria for the high school side, because we get a 23-year-old boyfriend that wants to show up and have lunch with his 16-year-old girlfriend. You know, that's why we don't allow that. So it's a different, it's a different angle, but it's the truth. I mean, that's why we, we instill that in the high school side. But, you know, the, the benefits of doing this on our end, we're actually following suit for a lot of districts in our area. This isn't new. We're actually, I'd, I'd say we're almost behind a lot of the other schools in what they've implemented.
Unfortunately, I, I see a lot of, when there's custody battles and like grandparents not supposed to see the kids, but there's no custody, or there's no court documents, and they're sneaking in, and then, you know, that kid is upset the rest of the afternoon and can't get back on task. And I mean, it happens quite a bit. I've, I probably had to tell, I'd say probably 10 or so students last year that, you know, I'm not going to allow grandma to come at lunchtime if we can't get ourselves back together to go back to class. So, I mean, it's just a lot of policing on that part as well, the emotions. Well, as we're talking about changes, I'm also going to do one more kind of significant change as well. I did put in the newsletter, and I did ask the teachers to write this in their letter as well, is I'm only going to allow parents to walk their children down to their class until the Tuesday, September 3rd, following Labor Day. And I let them know in my newsletter that there will be a staff member available if, if we're having a little meltdown. One, I mean, I just, I think that separation part with, you know, children and parents is, is kind of difficult at the kindergarten level, so if I can stop it sooner than later, that helps. And secondly, I mean, we still have like third grade parents that are walking their kids all the way upstairs, hanging out, trying to have a conversation with the teachers. So I'm just, I'm, I've already made the signs, I've laminated them, and I'm going to put one on a music stand going into this hallway. And we'll just have staff available to walk that little kiddo hand-to-hand down to the classroom. So, and again, that is safety reasons as well, because that's a lot of people coming in and out between 7:45 and 8 o'clock.
What date again?
September 3rd. So I'll let them walk them in Tuesday after Labor Day, and then we're going to be done. Kindergarten camp started on Monday, we have 21 students. It's gone very, very well. I'm just very grateful for the United Way for sponsoring this program, it's an amazing program. Sandy Brown for being the teacher, Ruth Ann Peerman for making the lunches, Stacy Wagner for transporting the, the students, they've just, it's, it's been great. And the only other thing that I was going to add was, we do have open house on August 20th for preschool and kindergarten from six to seven, we do that separately. And then grades one through 12 will be August 22nd from six to seven. And our first day for kindergarten students is August 28th, it's two days after everyone else starts, so we can get those state tests taken. Six to seven for both of them.
And that is all. Thank you. All right. Denny's not here for our four county career, and he didn't leave me something, so I don't have something new for that tonight. So superintendent's report.
Yes. First off, I'd like to introduce Mike. Mike Ruin is our treasurer. He was hired a few weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, and, and we're glad that he's here. Mike actually will start for us full-time September 1st. He's been in here periodically a few times in the month of August. Tom Taylor is our interim treasurer, and he's here the month of August, and Tom and Mike have had multiple conversations, and so, yeah, we're glad that Mike is here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Thank you.
And we're also thankful for Tom, who's filling in for the month of August. He's doing a great job up there, getting things ready to kick off the beginning of the school year. The ESC sponsored our annual administrative retreat for the four county area, and that was August the 2nd. And all of our administrators, the treasurer, Mike, and our psychologist, Liz Perna, all attended that kickoff for the year. And it's an opportunity where we have to network with our, our colleagues, fellow colleagues from other districts, and we also get updates from our representatives for our legal updates that we need to know prior to the year starting. Diane Zedek, Eric kind of mentioned that already, but she was, has been wonderful at contacting all of the kindergarten parents to find out those transportation questions, which is the most concerning grade level of all, on how those kiddos are going home and where they're going. So we're really thankful for Diane for doing that. And then next week, Diane, John, and Eric and I will finalize the country routes and the routes as a whole for the upcoming year. We've had a couple construction meetings for our academic fieldhouse complex, where we've been discussing multiple different things. Also, the drive to Route 18 has been a, a big topic of conversation, trying to get that kicked off. We still have very high hopes of getting that process, that drive started this fall yet, and if timing works out and the weather cooperates with us, there's a good possibility that that could be completed before the asphalt companies shut down for the year. If not, then we'll have to wait till spring to get it asphalted, but we're having high hopes that we can get that taken care of yet this fall. Along with that, Eric also mentioned about the teachers and everybody getting everything ready for opening day, and next Thursday is our annual teacher back-to-school breakfast that's sponsored by The Chamber here locally, and we're so thankful for them. We look forward to that event every year, and that's kind of the kickoff for the rest of the staff. So we're excited about that, and I know the teachers have been in like crazy, working on their rooms and getting that stuff ready also. The building really does look in great shape, contrary to ceiling tiles. I guess in the kitchen, there isn't one left, they all collapsed in the kitchen due to water, so it was, it was pretty, pretty wicked down that way. But we're thankful, it appears as though we're all sealed up in the back and headed in the right direction. The only other thing I wanted to mention about the beginning of the school year, in an effort to also help with traffic flow, we are going to be dismissing the kindergarten through fourth grade parent pickup students, this is really important, from the main event entrance. So that will start the very first day, and parents, instead of lining up in the flagpole loop, are going to need to line up along the high school side, and they'll dismiss all along that sidewalk, along the high school side, which will allow us a lot, a larger area to store cars, to get them off of the street. I still will say the same thing I say every year, that dismissal for parent pickup kids does not happen till 2:45, so there really is no reason to come out till 2:45. The problem is, we have people that come an hour early and sit there, and then it just backs up clear out onto the street, and that can't happen. That's not, that cannot happen anymore with cars sitting on the street. So what we're going to do is, we're going to dismiss from the main event and hope that that will get people off the street. If it doesn't, then we'll, we'll look at other ways to make sure that that happens. I will say, a positive to that is that that parent pickup group can dismiss the same time as our Loop 1 bus kids. The reason we didn't, just don't dismiss them at the same time now is we don't want our, our kids that are getting parent pickups walking by buses that are moving out in the bus loop. So with that separation, we can dismiss them both at the same time, and they'll be long gone before the fifth through 12th grade students dismiss. So that will alleviate a lot of traffic flow issues, we believe, so. And the other thing Eric kind of mentioned, but all the kids from parent, from buses that get off in the morning, the country routes, at 7:25 will enter through the elementary doors right here by the elementary entrance. They will no longer walk around the back of the building and come in the playground entrance doors. They'll come through the front of the building, walk down the hall to the main event, or to the commons area where we have supervision, and breakfast, obviously, so. Questions?
Well, just a comment, I know people are anxious about the, the road, but we were told today at the design meeting that they have received the variance, which was one of the items they had to wait on, which is just the approval that the driveway that we're putting in is not too close to another driveway, you have to get that through from the state, and they did receive that this week. So that's another positive piece of the puzzle, to get that road.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Just want to mention, there are three addendums for, one for the certified area, one for the classified area, one for services and agreements, so we can add those at the appropriate time.
Yes. Okay, are there any other items that need to be removed? All right, do I have a motion for the following consent agenda?
Move.
Jen and Steph, thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methvin?
Yes.
It carried five to zero. We're glad to be back to five.
And in alphabetical order automatically.
Wow, how about that? We're in alphabetical order. Sorry, I was close, Mazer, Methvin, that's good. Teachers notice. Teachers notice strange things. Yes, do I have a motion to approve minutes and financials?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Craig and Jen, thank you. All right, minutes for the regular board meeting on June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, and the special board meetings on June twenty-seventh, July third, July twenty-fifth, and August fifth, all of two thousand nineteen. Recommend to waive the reading of the board minutes unless otherwise stated. The treasurer's report, cash reconciliation as of June two thousand nineteen, and the financial statements for June two thousand nineteen. And Mike, we are super glad that you're here. We know you've only been here a couple days, so if there's something you want to add or comment on, feel free to.
Just, uh, just trying to get my feet wet, figure out where things are, how they've been done, um, where they're at. Fortunately, we, we don't have July closed out yet, uh, so there's still some entries being put in there. So that's why you don't see July's statements here, they will be there for our next meeting, July and August.
All right. Any other discussion about financials, or?
No, but thanks for coming in when you do, because it's hard carrying two positions at one time.
Thank you.
Yes, we're very appreciative. All right, roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Methwin?
Yes.
A motion carried five to zero. I need a motion for a transfer of funds.
I'll move.
Jen?
I'll second.
Steph, seconded. Recommend to transfer ten thousand dollars from the school district's general fund to the cafeteria fund. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Wait, so why, why do we have two separate?
I wondered that about the second one, too, why are there two separate ones? Because the next one is transferring to the cafeteria also.
Have they done it two separate times, is it a, the reason why?
They were two separate times.
And I assume that's probably why we're going at it twice.
Okay. Any other? Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methwin?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. I need another motion for transfer.
I'll move.
Craig? And Steph? Recommend to transfer eight thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and ninety-four cents from the school district's general fund to the cafeteria fund.
And just since we're on the topic, we increased prices slightly again this year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methwin?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero. I need a motion for employment of certified staff.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Jen? And Steph? Recommend to accept the resignation from Alex North as a classroom instructor effective July nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Recommend to advance Jessica Saunders to five years' experience at the master's degree level on the salary schedule for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Recommend to advance Alicia Nye to four years' experience at the BA one fifty level on the salary schedule for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Recommend to approve the following as Title I tutors for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year at a rate of one hundred fifteen dollars with a maximum of one hundred seventy-nine days, to be funded through federal Title I A grant funds. Brianna Culler, Mackenzie Coleman, Kate Haggerty, Stacy Wagner. Recommend to approve Ed Foster as a substitute teacher for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Don Perna, one-third of the freshman class advisor. Lisa Savage, district mentor. Brian Wonderley, assistant football coach. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Epstein.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methwin?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero with one abstention. All right, I need a motion to approve the addendum for the employment of certified staff. Jen?
I'll second.
Craig? Recommend issuing a one-year contract to David Moore as classroom instructor with a master's degree and ten years' experience for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year pending completion of proper certification requirements. Any discussion?
No, but welcome to the, to the crew, we're excited.
We are excited to have you. And it's nice to have you both here tonight, it's very nice. All right, roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methwin?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero, welcome to Hicksville. All right. We're, I need a motion for the employment of classified staff.
I'll move.
Craig?
I'll second.
Steph, thank you. Recommend to accept the resignation from Shane Bostick as a co-assistant football coach for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Jake North, weight room strength and conditioning coach. Recommend to approve Laura Wolford as a classified substitute for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methwin?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero. I need a motion for the addendum to the employment of classified staff.
I'll move.
Jen?
I'll second.
Okay, Craig, thank you. Recommend issuing a one-year contract to Mariah Stevenson as a classroom aide with zero years' experience for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year pending completion of proper certification requirements. Any discussion?
Mariah's hired for a student who is required to have a one-on-one aide.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methwin?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero. I need a motion to approve services and agreements.
So I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, Steph and Jen, thank you. Recommend to approve the education option program agreement administered by the Wood County Education Service Center for the Wood County Juvenile Detention Center, the Juvenile Residential Center of Northwest Ohio, and the Wood County Alternative School for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Amount for service to be seventy-five dollars per student per day for students assigned to JDC. Seventy-five dollars per student per day for students assigned to JRC. Per seat purchase at the ALC is eleven thousand five hundred five dollars for a full year. Per seat purchase at Wood County ESC schools is five thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars for one semester. Recommend to approve the annual payment of property liability and fleet insurance invoice in the amount of forty-one thousand five hundred forty-two dollars from the Ohio School Plan. Premium includes Ohio School Plan's risk management services. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methwin?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. I need a motion for the addendum to services and agreements.
I'll move.
Craig, thank you.
I'll second.
Jen, thanks. Recommend to approve a memorandum of understanding by and between RFS Behavioral Health, Tackle, Behavior Health, and Hicksville Exempted Village Schools, beginning August first, two thousand nineteen. Any discussion?
I'm so excited for this program again, I'm grateful for what you guys do and getting this all worked out, and great program.
And we'll have a second person this year, correct? It's awesome. Our kids certainly benefit.
And we, uh, they actually are gonna be utilizing an office in here because there's two people, there's confidentiality, there's case issues. We'll be using a small office there.
Good.
We have the largest desk in North Dakota House, and we go here, Mrs. Hoffman, this is for her to use, and then there's here this large office also. It'll work out really well.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methwin?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero. Okay, I need a motion for other business.
I'll move.
Steph, thank you.
I'll second.
Jen? Recommend to approve the two thousand nineteen twenty bus routes and designate authority to the superintendent to designate or relocate subsequent school bus stops. Recommend to approve the elementary school staff handbook for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Recommend to approve the high school, middle school staff handbook for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Recommend to approve the high school, middle school student handbook for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Recommend to approve a resolution stating that the following policy still meets the needs of the school district. Twenty-four thirteen, career advising. Discussion?
Just that the, uh, as I had mentioned earlier in my report, the bus routes are not completed, finalized. But even when school starts, they're not gonna be finalized, there's always adjustments that need to be made. And as always, we always tell parents to allow at least two weeks for the routes to stabilize as far as, uh, the times that they typically would be at the bus stop, uh, the time that they typically be picked up at home if it's in the country, that you need to be a little flexible the first couple of weeks of school as, uh, bus drivers are, uh, getting the timing down for their routes, so. Keep that in mind.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Methwin?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero. Okay, old business. The board needs to talk a little bit about the road. The, the road specs for the bid are for a GeoGrid quality road. And today at our meeting, he said the GeoGrid road would be eight inches of stone versus six inches if you went the other way. The GeoGrid asphalt is five inches versus four inches if you went the other way. And he said there haven't been soil samples done on that track through. And he said if you did them, you'd probably, it's like, what'd he say, two thousand feet? And you'd do like ten of them. And he said even if you did them, you can't guarantee that in between where you did spot one and spot two, there isn't still a spot that's not good dirt. So really, you don't gain a lot from doing that. But they feel like, because of the soil samples that were done when we built this building, that it would be a risk factor for us to not put in the GeoGrid level road.
The GeoGrid's thicker, and it's quite a bit longer. Well, you have, the, the, the cost is.
It would match our existing drive that we have out there, the main drive that's already out there that allows for, uh, buses to drive on. It also allows for our delivery trucks to drive on, um, the service drive, all that's GeoGrid.
But at the same time, the plane is, this is gonna be light traffic only, this road.
But he said even if we did that, and even if we could protect it from ever having anything heavier on it, he feels it's still a risk factor for us. Galen, is that what you thought, too, you were a committee member?
In terms of maintenance and the longevity of the road, it would hold up better over time.
I, I'm all for.
If it were heavier duty.
I, I mean, I'm all for building a heavier road, but like we talked before, we got a pot to, to pull from in that pot, you know? We got what we got, so whatever we spent here is gonna take away from our building. So, I mean, I, I mean, it'd probably be irresponsible not to build a thicker road, but I, it's something we just gotta keep in mind moving forward, that this is gonna cost double what we expected it to cost.
I disagree. Because we had already accidentally, well, we didn't understand that what they had, um, put forth for us was already this GeoGrid. So that cost that we got was the GeoGrid cost. It's already the cost, it's not gonna go up because we, they quoted us, they quoted us.
But what I'm saying is a year ago, and we talked about this.
And it is the same, Eric said he, the, the price that he gave us was the GeoGrid. It was that, it's actually gone up that much.
Well, I understand, but I mean, when we, we were trying to make decisions on two hundred seventy thousand, and now we're gonna be looking at closer to five hundred thousand, I mean, that's a huge jump from what we expected to pay. That, I, that's my only thought on the whole thing, but I, I, I think we're kind of on the road at, at some, we were gonna do, and we're gonna, we need to do it.
It's three seventy-four, three, three hundred.
Three ninety-one.
Three ninety-one now.
But that doesn't include lights, I don't believe, or electricity out there, it doesn't include our archway.
I think Eric said today about seventy.
Seventy thousand for the lights.
Electricity, lights, cameras, for what we'll need to do.
Archway, so, yeah, I mean, we're, we're pushing half a mil. So, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, we're gonna have to, we need to do it.
He felt like because of the soil samples today, that was kind of his big push.
Right, and, and the, the architect didn't make the point, if there was addition, you know, if, if it didn't wind up being as bad, he, it was like, almost like he was holding some in reserve for that. So we, we'd have the option to get some of it back, the way you structured the bid.
To avoid a change order, which are more expensive. By putting that in, uh, now, we'll avoid the potential change order.
And he said they have to put that price, at three hundred ninety-one thousand, they have to put that in the bids, that's required by law. But that doesn't mean that the people couldn't bid less than that to try and get the job. But it also means they can't bid more than ten percent of that, or they're immediately disqualified. If they would go over that by ten percent. So the, the bids and the specs are ready, he's got a couple little tweaks he's gotta do to them yet before they can be put out. But they're just waiting for us to say yes, the way it's bid at the GeoGrid is what we're gonna do. So that's what we need to just have, I don't know, do we need to vote? We just need a consensus.
We already.
We already voted to put that out on the bids, yeah.
So now the next one will be once we get the bid and, uh, to approve it.
Right, the bids will come in, and then they'll open them, and then you select one.
So is consensus that it is okay to go with the GeoGrid road? Okay.
I'll let him know in the morning.
So you let him know. Okay. Any other old business items?
Did you say you wanted to talk about Capitol Conference?
Uh, yes, yeah, I think we should because, uh, uh, the, uh, hotels open up the first part of September, and if you don't call right away, you don't get a room.
So, Galen, so you know, Capitol Conference is a conference that's held every year. It's a, um, down in Columbus, and it's, it's for school board members and administrators. And typically, someone from our district goes every year, it varies from year to year. And the timing also varies on how long they, they stay, some people wanna stay a little longer. The conference this year, I believe, starts on Sunday through Tuesday, through Tuesday.
Yes.
Yeah. We typically go down, um, like Sunday afternoon. And then some come back on Monday, and some come back on Tuesday, depending. So, uh, the cost is covered by the district, obviously, for this conference. There is, uh, uh, some sessions on Sunday morning this year, I mentioned to you guys that I want to go to, which is, uh, typically, they don't start those, uh, that early on Sunday, but there are some that, uh, that I wanna, I wanna go to. So I wanna go down Sunday morning, and, uh, I'll probably stay through Tuesday, uh, when it ends this year. That doesn't mean, and, and you don't have to go, as you, you guys all know, you don't have to go to Capitol Conference. It's just something that we offer to our board members every year.
It's November tenth, eleventh, and twelfth.
So I guess what I would need to know is who wants to go, first of all, and for what days you wanna go.
So when do we need to let you know, when would you like to know?
I need to know by September first.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna go for three days.
Okay.
I will, too.
And I know I'm going for at least through Monday and probably Tuesday this year also.
Okay, if you just email me all that stuff.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Come on.
Yeah, so, so if you go on Sunday, then we'll, you'll, we'll all ride, but, you know, go down with me. Save on gas.
Yes.
And I wanted to remind you, and I think, um, you might enjoy as well, we talked about last month, making arrangements to go and visit the alternative schools and the other schools that we use.
Oh, yeah.
And you told me to remind you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, let's do that, get the year kicked off.
Did you get to see the Mount Puyor building?
Yes, I did.
So I'll make an appointment for us to get to go see that yet. Okay.
Like the IEC, Ford County.
Okay, anything else for old business or discussion? All right. All right. Unannounced guests wishing to address the board. Yes?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, it certainly came up today. As you recall, the Village of Hicksville created a community reinvestment area this past year. And now we have our first business application. Business applications need to come before the school board to notify you, and I wanted to do that. I don't believe you'd take action on this because it wasn't on your agenda, but I wanted to notify you that Jim Schmidt Automotive has applied for the community reinvestment area exemption incentive for the new dealership building that they're planning. So, uh, the request is for a 75% exemption for a term of seven years. And that, those, uh, terms come from the village resolution that was passed that lays out the different residential remodeling and new construction items. So, uh, Taylor is here tonight, he could answer any questions you have about the project itself, but I'm here to notify her that the, that application is pending. I'm here, uh, Mike Bailey is the housing officer. This is our first business, uh, application, so I thought I'd come in and, and let you know. So I'll leave with you a, uh, it's a notice agreement that will acknowledge to Hicksville Village Council that the school board has been notified, and I do the same thing for county, and I'll go up to their school board meeting this coming Thursday. So I'll leave that here with Mr. Countryman, and when you can take, uh, action on it, ask what you do.
So at our September meeting is soon enough, we wouldn't have to have.
We'll get going as soon as possible, but yes, I understand you have to abide by your rules.
Okay.
Do I remember? Before that.
We may, may, but.
If we need to for the building, we never know.
Sure.
Do I remember correctly that it's based on the improvement?
Yes.
So it's the addition to what's like already there?
Yes, in this case, this will be new construction, so the, the land taxes are never exempted, that will stay. And 25% of the new raised market value will also be taxed at the regular rate. But 75% of the increased market value will be exempted for a period of seven years.
Is there a building, is there a building on that lot now?
No, it hasn't been.
Okay.
It's where we went through the process of consolidating all the lots that are there, it was eight parcels.
Okay.
So the existing building is going to stay in some facet, um, but that'll be modified in years to come. So it's a full, full construction facility. Um, speaking a little bit of the timing, um, because this is the first application, there was obviously some confusion. I'm actually on the CRA board, it was just mass confusion really. So, I would ask that you guys, so with the commercial application, and, um, correct me if I'm wrong here, it's industrial that you guys would actually vote to approve or deny. The commercial application is for you guys to provide comments to, um, to council to pass the resolution. That's a 14-day window. We're kind of in a time crunch here because I was under the assumption that we'd kind of reported everything, everything was, had followed through. There's a few more things, obviously, that have come up since then, as far as, you know, presenting more information, drafting resolutions, those sort of things. That'll have to be passed prior to foundations going in. Project starts Monday. So.
We can, we can.
I'd say we can add to it today.
We can add that to today's.
Yeah, there's no reason.
And it's, it's a 14-days to provide comments to council, the other, so I would just ask if you consider waiting for 14 days.
I, I. We've talked about some other different programs and stuff, and I, there's just not enough good things to say about the Jim Schmidt family and what they do for our community and what they do for our school. And I am personally ecstatic that they're improving and building, and more than happy, um, that they're taking part in this, and they're a great, great company.
And you remember when we, when the CRA program was set up, when Jerry was here, I don't know, how long's that been, Jerry?
Year and a half.
Year and a half or so ago, we all agreed at that time for the 75% for seven years, so.
That was for residential though, right?
Residential and commercial.
Just no industrial.
Okay, so what do you need from us tonight then to?
Just acknowledgement that we have provided you notification of the application and pending agreement.
Okay.
And waiting for 14-day period, because we're going to hope to, we hope to pass the, pass the, uh, resolution by emergency.
I was going to say if you can read off to Mike exactly how you want the resolution to be.
Sure. Waiver of notice period for an Ohio Community Reinvestment Area Agreement, Hicksville.
How about? Can we make copies of that and then? Yeah.
Keith has one.
And he'll make a copy, right here.
Thanks, everybody.
Right, right, fast, yeah.
Do you have any questions about facility, or do you have to answer the questions? Carrier, my, my estimated cost. Estimated cost, um, all included is, uh, 4.3 million. There's some equity pieces in there as well, but, um, the cost of the prop building itself is right on 3.5, so.
Is anything that's there now going to be taken down, or is it just all additional to?
Later, if, um, this space, the project is all, is all new construction. So eventually, the existing showroom will come off, and that, that building will be repurposed.
Not coming down, just?
No, the showroom will come off, the awning off the side will come off, but yeah.
That's wonderful.
We're excited.
You should be, it's great.
Just do the roll call.
That's great. So I make a motion.
Okay, do you need to just read this?
We need a motion.
Yes.
So I make a motion.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the waiver of notice period?
Yes.
Okay, Steph?
Steph and Jen.
Can I write on here? Okay, Steph. And then Jen, seconded. All right, Hicksville Exempted Village School District hereby acknowledges receipt of notice of application from Jim Schmidt Auto Hicksville, Ohio for a property tax abatement through a community reinvestment area under Section 5709.83 ETAAL of the Ohio Revised Code this date. Hicksville Exempted Village School District also hereby waives their right of a 14-day notice of this community reinvestment area agreement. The abatement being applied for by Jim Schmidt Auto is 75% abatement of real property taxes for a period of seven years. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Methvin.
Yes.
Done. Sure. Our pleasure, thank you.
Thanks for hanging out so long.
Yes, that's for sure. Okay, any other community members who'd like to speak? All righty. We, I need to have a motion to go into executive session for item number six.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Steph and Jen, there will be no action taken at the end of this executive session, all righty? So the time in will be about 8:50. Let's say a good five minutes, let's say nine o'clock. That gives us time to shake hands with Mr. Moore. All right. Roll call please.
I'm sorry.
Carrier.
Yes.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Methvin.
Yes.
Okay, five to zero, we'll go into executive session at nine o'clock.